So you think I don't need to hear?
Bring this meeting to water. We'll start off with the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic stands one nation under God, in the name of the Lord.
I want to take a motion to approve the agenda for amendment.
So I'd like to make a motion to amend so that we can add board comment. Mayor Coman.
Is there a second to that? There's a motion and there's a second in the conversation. Not hearing any. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Be opposed, it's unanimous. The agenda to add a topic at the end where Ford is currently aging for F. And that is to allow for a board comment. Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda, which is a fiscal 25 budget amendments. So the motion is a second. Is there any comments, thoughts? Not hearing any. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you. First agenda item is the fiscal year 26 budget.
City manager, Saldo. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We finally have a conclusion for a long budget process, so we look forward to starting off the fiscal year with a strong position going into this next fiscal year. Tonight, we were able to meet with the local business owner last week that brought forward comments about the community building fees. So we revised those to come up with a more palliative increase for those. Working with her, so that is good for that item without they can be over all budget. So that concludes my remarks. So I just asked for a motion to approve the FY '26 budget ordinance and accompanying fee schedule as presented. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Second. There's a motion and a second. How's your comment?
I do have to say thank you for that.
Absolutely.
Um, one, I want to start off by saying I had the opportunity to sit down with the city manager and the finance director. And I want to start by saying that I appreciated their patience with me and the work that has gone into creating this budget. I do have a few comments not changing the budget, but for consideration. Because we're discussing the budget, I would like to consider the need for our planning staff to have access to attorney advice and review and other resources regarding UDO processes, text amendments, and et cetera. I bring this up because the next agenda item, we'll be talking about a text amendment, the CZ. And we learned in our last meeting that some of the recommended language that was sent to us by the planning board was inconsistent with state statute. And in fact, some of the language Mr. Terrell identified as inconsistent with 160D is currently in our UDO. So it wasn't made up language. We just went through some text amendment updates to bring the UDO in compliance with changes that the legislature has made in 160D. So for me, it's a little disconcerting to have Mr. Terrell's review of conditional zoning reveal additional compliance issue for the UDO. So the question was asked, what could be the result of trying to enforce this noncompliant language? And the response was that if we pursue, the city would lose and be responsible for paying the expenses of the complaint. Much like we as a board rely on professionals like the city manager and the city clerk to make sure we don't overstep and our actions are consistent with state statute. The planning board is no different. In order for them to accurately complete their duties that's granted by state statute, the members of the planning board must have the support and guidance of professional planning staff. We are lucky to have a strong planning board made up of citizens that are volunteers to share their time and bring incredible knowledge to the table. You see this at every planning board meeting that we attend. And we are lucky to have. However, as hard as these volunteers work for the community they love, it is the job of our professional planning staff to make sure the work of the planning board is consistent with state statutes. The city provides the board of adjustment and attorney to advise them during meetings. Perhaps more attorney guidance and review are needed to also support the work of the planning board. It is the responsibility of staff to provide the volunteer members of the planning board with the knowledge and recommendations they need to complete their work. And this is actually written in the UDO places. And then along with the planning board recommendations come to us. When the planning board recommendations come to us, they are reviewed by the city attorney as part of our agenda. But this does not supply the support and guidance that the planning board needs to do their duties. There's really two parts to this for me, I think. The planning board needs to know that they have the information they need to make good decisions and the volunteer time they're putting in is worthwhile. And the planning staff needs the tools to provide an accurate foundation for the planning board's deliberations. And so as part of this upcoming year's goals and spending considerations, it's important that our planning staff have all the tools they require to support the work of the planning board. It is for our planning boards, I'm sorry, it's for our planning staff to determine what may be needed. And I would ask that the city manager help facilitate this.
Absolutely.
And then the other.
Can I, can I ask you a question?
Oh, yeah, I agree with you. Okay. I'll take it.
How do you envision this working? An attorney at the meetings with the.
Well, I think as the planning staff can determine. I think that, you know, they go into these work committees and they're working and doing. And if they're not told what they're looking at and what they're considering is within is consistent with state statute at that point, then they're working, doing work that then is going to come to us and then we're going to say, oh, no. You know, so I think, I think the planning staff and the city, they can determine what that process could look like or what tools they may need. And that sort of thing, I think that's really hopefully then. I'm not sure what that means, to be honest.
I'm curious only that, you know, this is, as we well know, attorneys don't work for free. But I don't know, that's a budget issue.
It will be a budget issue, but this is money well spent. We are nothing without a plan. Yeah, so, so anyway, I just, that became apparent to me in our last meeting.
Might, might I suggest that we consider that before a recommendation from the planning board gets to us, that the manager think about whether or not it has to go through an attorney to double check that. The one section, you and I had this conversation multiple times about that one section. And in the UDO, as we've said multiple times, is a living, breathing thing. So the fact that in the past, a sentence or two was stuck in there innocently enough.
Right.
To, which was wrong. In the future, I would, I would like that document to go through the attorney before it gets to us. We're not debating something because I don't, I don't have a shingle hanging out somewhere that says Esquire on it. But that may be a way to look at.
Yeah, I disagree. I do think that it needs to be at a foundational level. I don't think they need to be in work committees working on language that is inconsistent.
Well, then, you make a good point is that my idea would be at the very end and they spent a lot of energy to it. Maybe on text amendment issue, they have an idea of changing the text that, that before they spend a whole lot of work, I'm not sure. We have a conference manager, so I think your point is well taken.
Yeah, I just think staff is better equipped to decide what that could look like. Just understanding that from, from the beginning of their, their process, they need that support in order to grant to us the consistency.
And we go through all of this, whether it's the planning board or the board of adjustment or anybody else where our, our budget will continuously go up for legal things. And that's just the way of having to do business. We have to have a lawyer now at the plant of the board of adjustment to support them. And then we have our, another attorney at the board of adjustment supporting us. So there's a lot of attorneys running around, but yes, it's interesting. That's true.
It seems to me, we had an attorney there, it would save them a lot of time and effort as they go through to make sure everything that they're doing fits the letter of the law. That way they're not having to bounce back and forth because they've got a tremendous amount of work that needs to be done with coordination between the planning board and your staff. It would be nice if they could just go through it one time, it's going through, oh, wait, gotta go back. That makes sense. There is, there is an expense, same time, as you said, I think, people who do well spend.
Any other comments on?
Sorry. No, and that was it for the planning board conversation. I just wanted to make sure, I didn't see inside while, we had talked about this earlier last year about the grant for sidewalks between the ABC store and Dozer Hospital. Remember, we got that grant? And I just want to make sure it will expire this coming year if we don't take advantage of it. So I just wanted to make sure that was in the mix. And.
We had talked about making sure it went around the truth.
Yes, ma'am. That was all part of the conversation to be followed up on.
I don't know who's here yet for that.
Right, right. Good.
I'm not sure we, I ever heard that. Who does the project lead for that? Somebody's got to have their name on the document.
Yeah, just making sure. It's just so. I'm sure she does. It's time sensitive, right? And then the other thing is recognizing, we got the one-time money from the sale to certain point that will reside in the general fund. What I would like to ask that we consider, that the board consider earmarking it for land purchase residing in the general fund, but earmarking it for future land because it's one-time money. It was from a sale of land and we know that we're going to have land transactions in the future. So rather than it getting just absorbed into the 55% or whatever, you know. So I would like to us to consider that conversation. And then I talked.
Before you move on to. Is that the end of that topic?
Yeah.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
So clarify my, the 600 plus thousand comes over. Did that allow us to balance the budget? Are we using it this year to balance the budget? Or are we putting it into the?
We did not have to use it to balance the budget.
We did not.
Yes. And my understanding, I just want to say, if you correct me, because this was from our conversation, as I recall. The, the explanation of the 1.4 deficit and why we're not having to spend other money is because we really were growing the fund by about a little over 2 million, right? And then the fact that, yeah, that is a 1.4 deficit, but we're still growing the fund. So it's not like we don't have, we don't have that 1.4 money, but we're not without them.
That's right. Originally, it was all the money that carried over from Water and Sewer River. Here we thought, hey, we're losing that, that'll.
Right.
It did take into account the general budget revenue and expenditure picture, which we are way exceeding revenues from expenditures outside of the Water and Sewer money. So absolutely, that's where that originated. We no longer have that deficit because of the budget growth and.
Right, right. Thank you for your patience in that. And then the only other thing with the conversation was the underground, we talked about the fund as we're depleting the fund and building the fund, if we could kind of construct a long range picture for that so that we don't come to the end of our resources in three years or we know that we are or however we plan for it. So if we could get some kind of analysis for that, that's all my ideas.
Well, we did learn that, that it's healthier to be faulted as well, right?
Exactly. And I think we've talked about maybe having a similar fund balance policy to the general fund. So, you know, whatever that number is, we can make sure we don't overload that as we plan for the underground. So I think definitely we'll take a look at that and make sure.
Okay, a question for you. I like the idea of the earmarking those funds for future land purchases. We've gone way short, of course. Do we need another amendment for the budget to make that?
I mean, it would be, either way, I mean, we don't have to at this point. I mean, we can come back with another amendment as we go into the fiscal year once we get that fuller picture. So I think that'll be fine. I mean, we'll eventually do that as we get to that point.
I just want to make sure we don't level away.
Right.
No, I'm very right. Okay.
So, so would it be safe to say that, I'm going to, I'm going to start. Paul Gross, so Paul Gross comes in, he's, he's there for six months, he starts writing policies and procedures. Lance comes in, he's doing more policy procedures.
Right.
Our current finance officer is in there writing more policies and procedures and because of those three gentlemen, we have taken a system that was not stellar. I think we're moving it absolutely in correct fashion because every time we have a discussion about a budget, whether it's, we thought we're spending 1.8 million to 1.6 million dollars for underground and we're only spending a million dollars for underground because that's where the capacity of the vendor could have. Well, none of us knew that. Now, as we progress from a broken system to a system that seems to be much better in status, I want to thank those three gentlemen for moving us forward because we're learning things that we didn't know before.
I would, I would say it wasn't a broken system, it was a normal system, like I was very small town.
Okay.
Might be a little harsh to use the word term, but I would say, yes, we're heading into the 21st century.
Okay. From the 18s, but go the 21st century. Do you have any other comments?
No, no, thank you. That's it.
Does anybody else have any comments or rebuttals or any thoughts? All right, we have a motion on the floor and a second to approve the budget is. Not hearing any other comments. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? The budget, you know, just want to thank you.
First budget on budget, is it yours?
Not a surprise. That wasn't a single street.
Yeah, what fell into space?
Agenda item number two, which is the UDO zoning text amendment. Mo, are you up, ma'am? Do you want to fill us in on the other question that came up?
Sure. And so the sidewalk grant that is for the sidewalks from Owen Street to Dozer Memorial. We are, we had just received the agreement from the TGTs. That was part of the process that SAG was trying to get up to speed. We didn't realize, I think there was some miscommunications between SAG and DOT. At some point, people thought that it was already profit thing and DOT is going to be doing the engineering. The city is going to be doing all the engineering and construction with reimbursement. So we've gotten the, we just got the agreement this morning. So we'll be signing that.
How timely.
Right. So we have that agreement. So that'll be signed off by the city and the finance director. And then we'll be able to move forward with our engineering. So we are having a kickoff meeting this week with Tom Daley and Tom Zilling, myself, and I'll represent the subdivision three engineers and the NCDOT groups. So that's in the process now.
Will say SAG that you can handle, you're doing the physical labor.
No.
We're going to contract.
Yes, we contract should do that. And we did have to walk with Ron Bayle, who's one of our engineers. So we did walk the whole ride of way and I'd also walked with Tom Daley and Tom Zilling to make sure that we could get around trees where we need. We have ample ride of way except in a few places at the corner of Ninth Street is going to be our biggest challenge because all the junction boxes with the light there and then our local. So we've got some challenges, but we're working on those right now.
Awesome.
This is manager. This is a conversation that the board has had a couple of times now. I believe it is. Baldwin Kelly, you mentioned a grant document for projects in which there's a name posted at the top. Says you are responsible for making sure this happens and you are responsible for reporting back to the manager about the outcome of that. I'm hoping that we're moving forward with that kind of concept because this, this is not the first time that we've had projects that just got misled, misled, waylaid off the rails. Because we agreed to do something, but we never put anybody in charge or something. So as we move forward, hope that.
And I want to start also providing, and that probably will be the update of the board on all of our projects where we're at, what we need to accomplish and where we're going so that everybody can keep up to date on where we're going and what needs to happen.
Locals being the spot that there's possibly some pickups. I would love to make sure we're talking to the owners of that business as well.
Yeah, and we're not going to do anything radical.
No, no, no.
And we have also even talked about taking it across the street, to the other side of the street and going across. So we're, we're working through those things. Absolutely, the property owner is part of the conversation. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
So that those types of things will end up at the round tables that the manager has put, where we're actually now talking. This is offers.
Yes.
And I waylaid you. You'd be so kind there.
Yeah, I'm just going to give a brief, this is the conditional, I mean, I apologize, the technical residential resuming and the appendix A for the UDO. We had our required public hearing at your June 12th meeting. The language of your packet includes the advocates, planning board, and the changes from Mr. Terrell that were included. So the planning board has recommended approval and staff recommends approval of the changes that were brought forward at the last. Any questions about that?
Robert.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the proposed amendments to the UDO section 211, 2.11, conditional resuming and appendix A, submittal requirements of the UDO and pass consistency statement in favor as recommended by attorney counsel.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this topic?
I brought it up during our last meeting. I just want to mention that again to anyone who do not hear that, please go back and listen to my thoughts and feeling and how I got here.
Any other comments? All, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimously, thank you. Next topic is the development agreement between Waterway and, Mo, you're up again.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. This is the approval by ordinance of the development agreement between Southport and Waterway LLC. The document that you have in your packet includes the changes that were approved, the suggestion with the native planting and the dark side initiatives by the board.
Awesome. I move to approve the ordinance and development agreement between city of Southport, North Carolina and Waterway of Southport LLC. As presented in the agenda packet, subject to the following conditions. One, city staff is authorized to correct any type of graphical errors and fill in any blanks in the document for final execution. And two, exhibit G of the agreement containing the UDO shall be updated to reflect the version of the ordinance adopted by the board.
Is there a second to that moment? There's a motion and a second. Is there any conversation on the topic? Not hearing any. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I guess the last one is the conditional zoning map amendment. Easy 2501, Waterway Community.
This next item is the request for conditional resuming map amendment with associated master development plan for the Waterway Community. As you notice, it's a section of a property that was part of the development.
As you know, this is a section of a property that was part of the development agreement, that is within the city's limit. It includes approximately 48 acres, 199 multifamily, two families, single-family homes or posts, approximately 10,000 square feet of non-residential use since at the marina. June 12th meetings, I will answer any questions that you may have.
Does anybody have any questions for Mo on this topic?
I'll make a motion to adopt additional zoning map and master development plan as proposed by the applicant, attached consistency statement and statement of progress.
Is there a second to that motion? A second? Is there any conversation on the topic?
I just want the public to go back and look at our last meeting, to think that question about how we got here. It was a long process. This is not a rubber stamp, by any stretch of the imagination, we have been working with the developers and landowners to make this possible, to bring into the city of Southport. And to, part of that is making sure that the land that is already in the city of Southport works as best we can ask for it to.
Any other comments? I'm just going to do my comment then. And that is that there's been lots of noise out there about doing things behind closed doors and all kinds of other concepts. And we had constantly been in contact with our development attorney, who's one of the best in the state, to make sure that we did everything correctly. This board was constantly updated and asked questions about path forward. Just to pull off, Robert and I were asked by the board, by the board, and voted by the board to represent the elected officials in the process. And when we got to decision points, we would come back to this board and brief them as to what happened and ask for their guidance to move forward each and every time. That is how development agreements are done. They're not done on a billboard outside on Howe Street. It is the way that the business world works. And we then post it all before we actually vote on things, so comments can be had. Then there's public comment on it. This topic has been public commented for four and a half, five years, whatever it is. Hundreds of people have come to us. There used to be, when we were in the community building, I remember that one of the first meetings, we had so many people, they had to open up the doors, and the people outside rotated past the open doors to hear what was going on. That's how much involvement this has been. And so when the world changed, and ETJ was gone, the world changed, and that changed the direction of the board and what we could do and not do. So we have, I believe, come to the best conclusion for the city, for the residents, for the developer, for everybody involved, based on the conditions that we face now. Andrew, and with that.
Can I add something?
Yes ma'am.
Some observers of the water of Alton, which seem to be everybody in town, probably noticed that at the end of every board of all of the meeting, going back to before the beginning of this year, we were going into closed session. Well, there were some other issues, sometimes personnel, but every one of those involved updates on, this is where we are in discussions with our attorney and with the indigo developers or Waterway developers, this is what's at issue now. These are the decisions we're going to have to consider, once you're thinking. You know, we were there for 11:30 one night, going over all of this. And just like, whenever you've been in an estate transaction, you know that you don't publicize what you're doing. We should, that's, I don't know if that's law per se, but we would have gotten nowhere if the public were aware of every step of this, because sometimes something would come up and we would say, no, didn't we, didn't we say we didn't like that? Well, why should we like it now? And then Robert and Rich would fill us in further, and we move on. It was slow, it was tedious, but we got to where we are now. And we've got something that I don't necessarily like, but I think it's over perfect. You know my saying, we've heard it probably many times, we cannot let perfect be the end of the good. This is good.
Any other comments?
At the end of the day, we're working with the developers. And we have to be very, very.
I think as we go down the road, this project develops over time. The city of Southport, the people of Southport will be happy if they see it there because it's going to be done right. It's been a great deal of time putting this thing together over the years. And I think the decisions that were made, I think that you two guys have put it together for the city, for the attorney, that he wrote down. And I think the city of Southport should appreciate what you did.
Any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Yes, honestly, thank you. That brings us to the last thing, which is board comments. Frank, I'll start with you, sir.
Yes ma'am.
Okay. Mark, is there? Hello? Robert?
No.
I've been.
I've been.
I received an email Saturday night, 6:00 PM, from the legislature subcommittee, the notification that Tuesday at 8:30 in the morning, the de-annexation bill, 337, that was sponsored by our representative, Representative Miller, will be before the finance committee. So my understanding would be that that would be in an effort to continue to move this forward. They apparently, de-annexation is so popular, they created a subcommittee on annexation and de-annexation to the legislature finance committee, interesting. And so I just want, I am planning to go, try to be there at 8:30 in the morning because this, we all understand that this is not in my favor. The properties that are in question are the properties where Southport Dog is located on, probably it's located on, and the parcel behind it, or two of them, which are between 12th and 14th Street. I mean, they're in town. And then the other one is the Southport Motor Cars parcel land that that business is located on. They're in different names, they're not in those business names, the owners of the properties. But the one, especially Southport Motors, is, is near our entrance corridor, and is a huge parcel by comparison to other parcels, that then would fall under county zoning and 55 feet, all the different height conversations, and just the different standards that, because we do not have an overlay, my understanding is, it's some question about whether we're even going to get the ability to create an overlay, this go-round from the legislature, we will promise that we will be able to do that. So anyway, I just want citizens, you know, we're all looking for ways to help the city. This is not in the best interest of our town. This will take money out of the budget that we just passed.
Yeah, I'm sorry, just for the record, is, the owners of the businesses are also the owner, in this case, the owners of the land?
Well, they're in different names, I would not say that. I would say that those businesses are located on those parcels. It's how I would frame that, because they're.
I asked that question, because that's research.
Yeah, and so that's why, they're in like LHCs and different things, right? So I don't want to say that, but I do want people to know what parcels you're talking about. And that's why I'm referencing the businesses that are located there. But this is, this is a real sign that not only were we stripped of our ETJ, now they're going to take us apart, parcel by parcel.
A very vivid illustration of what we're going to be looking at if we do lose these is on the for-sale sign, it's actually a billboard that says county zone, up to five-plus stories high, allowed. And if you drive down Howe Street, there it is, right in your face. And I suspect that that's exactly what we didn't get.
I assume you'll try to get, but you can go probably right, unfortunately.
Any other comment?
Yeah, right, we're giving him and start to the budget here in a few days.
I want to congratulate the board on the hard work on this. Any questions? We've gone through many, interesting meeting. The follow-up on Alderman Mosseller's comment about the overlay. Please, I may have the bill number wrong. There was a bill, I think it was 576 something. And that was supposed to eliminate the bill from last year that said you couldn't have downzone.
Yeah.
So the downzoning bill, we were assured was going away because Senator Lee wanted to throw the lead from. And then there was comments, conversation about that on the House level. The House started the bills and goes to the Senate this particular year. We all thought that that had been crossed over. When I was in Raleigh, 10 days ago, whenever I was in Raleigh. And I was sitting in one of the offices, we learned at that moment that it never may cross over. Even our representatives didn't know it could not have crossed over. And so then I was told about Bill, Senate Bill 204, 205, something like that. Which really, the league absolutely against that, and it's going to hurt a number of municipalities across the state, and I've talked to the league multiple times about that. But that's still moving back and forth. I specifically asked about the downzoning issue, and what I was told is, that's okay. We're not going to, we're not going to entertain it. Now, the person saying that did not have the authority or the voting, they couldn't vote, it was a staff member. So I listened and I understood what he was saying. But the County Commissioners Association for the State of North Carolina, they want that downzoning ability. We want that down, we all want that downzoning ability because it'll allow us to go into an agreement with the counties for the overlay for entranceway, basically House Street, although we have House Street, or going all the way out. We would be able to collectively, working collaboratively with the county, be able to limit how tall buildings were, or kind of building, we could do a lot of work to make it aesthetically, professionally, and economically viable entranceway into the city. Unfortunately, right now, the county zoning, Alderman, who Davis just talked about, and Frank just talked about, could allow for up to a 75-foot ability, depending on the setbacks that you have on the piece of property, how big the property, but certainly plausible. And any kind of, any kind of business, any kind of anything. So we're kind of stuck right now. And as with other topics, the city is pretty good at, when they want it, to go and write to everybody in the world, in Raleigh, to explain why this would be a good thing. Why this would be a good thing for the introduction of this municipality or any other municipality, be able to work collaboratively with the county and municipalities, which in the past, facing a lot of back and bullseye for that reason. We are trying to do, this would come before the planning board, this would be, come before us, we'd be able to work and figure out what we're trying to do. So as we move forward, we try to move forward and actively work with Raleigh as best we can, with the county, with everybody. It is a new age, but right now, we're getting kicked in the head, but that's just where we are. So with that, if there's any comments for my comment, entertain them, if not, yes ma'am.
A question for you.
Yes ma'am.
We're asking the community to get involved, to write letters, to make phone calls. What specifically do we owe the people will ask for?
The ability for municipalities and counties to downzone it when appropriate.
I just want to be sure people like.
You're not with our community apart by the annexation, spot the annexation.
Yes, I mean, that's a simple one, but yeah. So.
That's immediate, that's.
That's, that's, that's an immediate issue because it's this week.
And with the being of Senate Bill 205.
Right.
And it's 205.
Take one's power away.
Right.
The, as I said, the league of municipalities is trying to work with all the municipalities to see 205. How successful they'll be, you should have to be. And with that, I'll entertain a motion.
Can I ask one thing? For staff to notify the members of the committee, the finance committee, that are going to be hearing this on Tuesday, to send emails leading our case and the resolution that we passed against this de-annexation, this after.
With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Is the motion in a second, is there any conversation? Hearing, all say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You said.